Kayla, if you would just stand up here for a minute. We have a few questions we would like to ask our special guests. So, Kayla, since you're listed first on here, I'm gonna start with you. Tell us what school you go to?
I go to Richmond Elementary.
Okay, step up a little bit closer. Say it one more time.
I go to Richmond Elementary.
Richmond Elementary. And what grade are you in?
Fifth grade.
And who's your teacher? Do you have more than one teacher?
My homeroom teacher is Mrs. Zacharias, and then I have Mrs. Bellamy and Mr. Justice.
Very good. Do you have a favorite subject?
My favorite subject is math.
Math. We love to hear that. And when you get home from school, what do you like to do after school?
I usually work on homework if I do, and then I just kind of hang out.
Okay, are you in... Do you take any lessons?
My sister and I signed up for a running club that our school is gonna do, so we're gonna be starting that in about two weeks.
That's great. Your sister who's six years old, right?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I met her. Okay, Jay, it's your turn. Tell us what school you go to.
I do... I go to Oklahoma Connections Academy, an online school.
Very good. And what's your favorite subject?
Science.
Science and math. Engineers? Think we have engineers sitting here? And when you're done with your homework and with school, what do you like to do?
I do taekwondo, and I enjoy reading and origami.
Origami.
Origami?
That's cool.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Darlington and I tried origami, and school children were teaching us how. She did very well, but they had to finish mine for me. But I love it, but it's very hard to do, so... Anything else? I didn't ask you... Jay, who brought you here tonight?
My parents.
Your parents. Would you tell us their names?
Robin Cornwell and Sandeep Knobber.
Thank you, parents, for bringing him. And Kayla, who brought you? Step back up to the mic.
Maggie Daniels and John Daniels.
And you had two other people besides Maggie and John with you. Who'd you have with you?
I had my two-year-old sister named Bella and my six-year-old sister who's in first grade named Lauren, and then my grandma and grandpa and papa came.
Well, and they're all sitting back there, so we'll wave at all of them. Yeah. Thank you both for being here now. If you'll stay... Stand there for just a minute. I'm gonna bring you something. We're gonna take some pictures, okay? Thank you for coming here. Now, one more thing. Jay has... I need to grab a piece of paper. Jay did a recycling project, and the focus was recycling and its effect... The effect it has on the environment. And his goal is to educate people about the benefits of recycling and hopefully convince others to start recycling. And so, we want to thank you for your hard work. Recycling is very important. The city of Stillwater recycles, and we encourage everybody to. And so, I would like to give you this as a way of saying thank you for your hard work. Okay? All right, so... You wanna hold that up? Thank you both. Thank you families for bringing them. And I don't know if I... You're free to leave if you would like, but you're always welcome to stay here and listen. I know you have smaller children, so...
I really liked the report that Jay wrote, especially the part about people throwing junk and waste willy-nilly.
Yes, yes. Okay, that takes us to the consent docket.
Motion to approve consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote.
How are we doing?
Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor LaHara?
Yes.
Counselor Sanani?
Yes.
Consent... Oh, I'm sorry. You go... And the consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. And I'd like to say welcome back to Counselor Nahara.
Thank you.
And that takes us to public... We don't have anything. Never mind. It will take us to number seven, public hearings. Item A, receive public comment regarding adoption of a stormwater quality management plan for the 2015 to 2020 permit cycle, CC-16-13. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol?
Paula Dennison, Director of Development Services, will provide the report.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Every five years, the city of Stillwater, as a Phase Two community on the National Pollutant Elimination Discharge System, has a permit cycle that we go through. And this is the finalization of our next five-year permit cycle, which will be 2015 through 2020. And what we have done is, back in December, y'all recall that we brought before you an item similar to this, opening up for public comment, the proposed draft for the... Our MS4 permit for the city. That public comment closed this past Friday, January 8th, at 5:00 PM. We did not receive any public comments on the draft. As you also know, and I've included in your packet the list of names of the citizen committee that we utilized to help us build on our previous permits and enhance that permit for this permitting cycle. And those, like I said, are included in your packet. This is the final opportunity that the city has prior to turning in our permit for DEQ to review and approve. We will be sending it off to DEQ on the 25th to have it there in time prior to their deadline. Couple of things that I will note for you. There are additional criteria from DEQ that we can expect. We will have this five-year permitting cycle to work on these additional criteria, and the criteria are due to pollutants that are found in the streams that come through the city of Stillwater. The hard-line requirements from DEQ are not going to be effective during this 2015 to 2020 permit cycle. Gives us time to still work on and figure out with the assistance of DEQ of how to alleviate those. So, still, they're letting us design our own program, in essence. And that's why we thought it was extremely critical to have the citizen committee to help us design the program. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Here again, it is due the end of January, and after your action this evening, we will be preparing the documents in the appropriate binders and all to send off to them for approval.
Counselors, questions?
Just a comment. I do want to thank the citizens who served on the committee. They met six, eight evenings.
Yes.
And so, thanks to them, and thank you for putting their names in the agenda.
Yes.
Yes, they had a great learning opportunity, and they are very excited to continue to work with the city for any other thing that we can use them for. So, we've signed them up for multiple years.
Good. Very good. I would like to reiterate, very, very important work and very appreciative of their time. Anybody else? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. And we don't have anyone, so I will close the public hearing.
I did not put on a slide, but staff does recommend that the council approve our stormwater quality management plan and authorize the city manager to sign the notice of intent and any associated documents.
Okay, is there a motion?
Still moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-16-13. Yes. On staff's recommendation. Please vote.
Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor Nahara?
Yes.
Counselor Sanani?
Yes.
And that motion passes with a vote of five to zero.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. That moves us to general orders. Contract with Stillwater Medical Center to construct splash pads at Boomer Lake and Southern Woods Park. Mr. McNichol?
I think people will be excited to hear this presentation.
I wish those children were still in here, because they really would be excited.
Two different locations, and Jim Scott will give a brief presentation, and then I believe Mr. Dorman will set up with contract information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If this works, there you go. This is a design of the splash pad that will be at Boomer Lake. Total, spending between about $550,000 for two splash pads. So, both of them, each one is different. There'll be different designs on both of them. This is Boomer. Boomer will be by the picnic shelters, up towards the north end and be beside the restroom. There'll be a lot of parking. The bathrooms are close, and that was something that we looked at. And then, this is Southern Woods. You can't tell a lot of difference, and it's hard to tell off of these drawings what you're gonna see. All of the elements are on timers. There will be water spraying from the pipes or from the elements up, also out of the concrete. They're pretty simple to run. They're a lot better than they were 15 years ago. They don't use a lot of water. They're all on timers. You can set what time they'll start to run in the day, in the morning or in the afternoon, and then what time they're shut off. They can be winterized, shut down for the winter. These will have also, if I understand the contract right or the bid right that the hospital did, they'll have some small little shade areas around each splash pad, too. As Mr. McNichol said, we've gotten a lot of comments already just by kind of word of mouth going out around town. And I was looking back through emails today, and I started meeting with a group in 2012 talking about splash pads and trying to come up with some money and raise some money. So, for me, this is kind of exciting, too. That's gonna be a great improvement in the parks and also for our city. So, Mr. Dorman has the important part that he'll talk about, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Will you, before we go to the boring stuff, the cool stuff? Is it going where the, I guess, that basketball court just got taken out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, right beside the playground in Southern Woods.
Will there be lights and things installed, or will they not be on at night, so it's not a big deal?
They will not be on at night, but we will work on some security lighting to where it won't be lit up real, you know, to where you could use it, but at least where we could see what's going on.
Will we be able to recycle the water at Boomer, since it's right there?
The water will actually be discharged into the lake. And so, we don't have to pay for it going through our sanitary sewer system, and that's something that was just changed with DEQ to allow that to happen. So, that's a pretty big development that happened with DEQ.
Yeah, and then completion?
To recycle is really, really... It's very expensive. It's gonna require somebody to be on site.
Oh, okay.
It's a big deal trying to... It's just like running a pool when you start recycling it and containing it.
Okay.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes. I'm just really pleased to see that we're actually trying to implement a plan to do two splash pads. There have been so many councils that have discussed this and wanted to have it done, folks that have come and gone from long before us. I'm just thrilled that we're able to get this going.
You know, we could've done one. It would've been a big one for that kind of money, but... And the hospital was... They've been wonderful to work with, the folks there, and very appreciative of them doing this and kind of taking the lead and going with it. So, the bids have been let, the bids are ready. So, we're just... We're kind of waiting on a contract, and this thing can start.
Walk backwards, so I think we're coming back already.
I'm sorry? Okay. We hope these are open in May, if the weather cooperates.
I just have one question. The hospital is constructing the splash pad and, you know, everything that brings... That goes with it, all the equipment?
Yes, it's all in the bid that the hospital put out.
Okay, and we...
There'll be some hit-and-miss things that we can cover in our operating budget, but for the most part, everything is gonna be covered in this bid.
And that would include... I'm happy that you mentioned the shade areas.
Yes.
That would include the shade pieces.
Yes, those were add-ons into the bid, and those were accepted also.
It's too hot to sit out in the...
Yes, it is.
And watch your kids play. Yeah.
Well, and I have to say it for someone, I'm excited for kids and families, but I run Boomer Lake, and it might be kind of nice to be able to figure out when that timer goes off. So, I can just run on in there.
There's no age limit?
Yeah, I wouldn't think so.
There are no signs that say for children only.
Thank you, thank you.
So, you just never know.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Dorman?
I'll just kind of briefly run through this. This is a little different than a lot of the contracts that you've looked at lately, because essentially what we have here is an agreement with Stillwater Medical Center Board of Trustees for to accept a donation. And the way that this is structured is essentially it's set as force the term is under which you will accept this property, because SMC, as it lays out here in the contract, is basically gonna pay for all of this. The funding, I think, is a little more than a half a billion dollars for the two sites. They have already bid this thing out. They already have a contractor ready to go. The contractor has put up bonds and everything that run to either us or to SMC, depending on what they are. And so, that's essentially what this thing does here. The city is responsible for taking utilities out to the sites, so the water and electric crews will make some adjustments up on the two properties. But basically, they will construct it and hand it over to the city. The city runs it and maintains it, and of course, the all-important, the city accepts all of the liability for it once the thing is turned over to the city. And we will have a process whereby the acceptance will be in writing. So, we will actually execute a document that will be given to the hospital trust for the purpose of showing that we've accepted the improvements. And so, we will actually know when the liability shifts, because until that time, the hospital's actually liable for what happens at that site. We also have provision in here for disposition of it when, if, and when it finally wears out and we need to do something else. So, everything should be covered in this, and the hospital's council has reviewed this, and I believe the trust board is ready to go with it. There may be a minor adjustment or two, so if you do choose to accept this agreement tonight, I would ask that you make that subject to final legal review, so that we make sure that we get everything. If there's any other remaining non-substantive points, that we don't have to bring those back here, and we can get this project started.
And I guess we should say thank you to the hospital trust.
Absolutely.
Staff for being supportive. I can't remember a project like this of this nature that the hospital has done for the city, so thank you very much.
Yes.
Well, I would like to say, that was going to also be something that I would like to say. I'm on the trust, and I... They get very excited when they talk about this project. They're all very excited about it, and all of the hospital employees are behind this. There's just such enthusiasm for this, so thank you, hospital, for doing this. Thank you, Stillwater Medical Center. This is another great team project, partnership between the city and Stillwater Medical Center this time, so I'm very proud that they are doing this for the city. It's great.
Motion to accept the contract.
Subject to legal final legal review?
You'll pick over it up forever. Subject to legal council review. Second.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second to accept the contract, subject to final legal review. Please vote.
Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor Nahara?
Yes.
Counselor Sanani? Yes.
And that is approved. Splash pads are approved with a vote of five to zero. And we hope to see them by Memorial Day.
I think Elaine should be the one that cuts the ribbon, and then they turn them on right then.
I think that is a brilliant idea.
Let's remember that.
That's an idea, yes.
You should've put that in the motion.
They don't want us out there in our...
Okay, that takes us to ordinances on second reading. Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance number 3333, an ordinance authorizing the long-term lease of a certain parcel of property located at 701 East 12th Avenue, providing for citizen-initiated referendum of said lease in accordance to Section 42 of Stillwater City Charter. This is the food bank lease. This will be second reading. We have the contract and stuff ready to submit for publication, which should happen sometime later this week. And assuming no objections to that, then this thing would be ready for signature early February.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I didn't even ask if there was any discussion. Another great, another great good news thing that we get to...
Don't you wish every night were like this?
Yes.
No kidding.
Motion, and we have a second to adopt ordinance number 3333. Please vote.
Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor Nahara?
Yes.
Counselor Sanani?
Yes.
And that motion passes. The ordinance is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Very proud moment. That takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307b4 to engage in confidential communication regarding pending workers' compensation claims filed by John Dilly and Craig Reed. It is my opinion that public disclosure of these matters will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process this claim and/or conduct an investigation and/or prosecute or defend any resulting litigation proceeding in the public interest. Second, I would request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307c10 for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property or financing or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within the city of Stillwater. Because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services, it would violate the confidentiality of business.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, ma'am, that's all.
All right, Mr. McNichol?
Two items, Mayor. One is just to emphasize again that we have really broadened the number of partnerships that we have around the community over the last couple of years, and there, it's a win-win for everybody.
It really is.
And we'd like to see that continue. Second, the Stillwater Energy Center steals out of the ground, and we're making progress, and some very large engines will be delivered within the next week or so by rail, and I believe they're... They may be the same kind of engines that power cruise ships. They are huge, and some of the biggest engines in the world. So, if you're interested, you might keep an eye on the website. We might be able to find out exactly when they're coming. You can see them being offloaded.
Okay, I'm glad they're not going down Perkins Road, because that just always blocks traffic, so very excited they're on by rail. All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. City council, anybody have anything they would like to share?
I do. It's hard to believe we're looking at Martin Luther King Day celebration this next weekend, and wanted to let everyone know that the celebration doesn't start on Monday. It actually starts on Sunday, 1:30 PM at the Stillwater Public Library. They're going to do the film Selma and also have a panel discussion afterwards, so please think about joining and participating in this. It's a great, great movie, wonderful way to kick things off. And then, the actual Martin Luther King Day celebration will be Monday, January 18th. The march begins at 6:30 at the Stillwater Public Library, and the program begins at 7:00 PM at Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church, located at 9th and Knoblock. And if you've not ever seen this, it is amazing.
It is amazing.
The talent and the music and just the meaning behind it is very powerful, so I encourage you guys to go. Also, reminder that the city hall and most offices will be closed next Monday, January 18th.
Okay.
And speaking of recycling, Jay's project, we are... We do have new glass totes for recycling. If you would like a new 18-gallon tote with the yellow lid and handles for your glass, fill out a form and return it to city hall. The form is available. It was in the newspaper this weekend, and it was... And it's also online at stillwater.org. You can pick a form up in person at city hall or at the library.
Very good.
When you go to the Selma movie.
And you can email them. I did it today. It took like five seconds. And Ian said he already saw it, so...
There we go. Okay, just email it.
Email it. It's very easy to do. It's easy to find on the website, too.
And very convenient and great for our environment, so...
Yes. Mark your calendars for the upcoming budget fair Thursday, February 4th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at the community center. This is an opportunity to discuss the 2017 budget with city officials.
And a very important discussion it is. We hope everybody... We hope a lot of people will come out to this and tell us what they think.
Mayor, you might notice, I think you in particular would notice, that we have about 20,000 of our closest friends back in town.
Just love that, yes.
So, we might love the increased traffic and activity around town.
Increased traffic and increased enthusiasm.
Absolutely.
We love our students. Glad they're back. And today was week one, day one, and so they showed up. We're in session. Class is in session. You can meet your legislators on January 14th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Stillwater Public Library Auditorium. This event gives citizens the opportunity to speak one-on-one with several of our legislators, and for more information, you can visit the library's website. That's a great event as well, so I hope people will attend that.
It's really fun.
It is fun. And you rarely get to speak one-on-one with a legislator, so take the opportunity.
Not just us.
Not us, yeah. I mean, we'll be there, but we're not... The important... The more important people. Okay, if we have nothing else, something else? You two are important. I didn't mean that.
Oh, thank you so much.
She's extra important.
Okay, we do have appointments tonight, and so I'm just gonna start at Stillwater Regional Airport Authority Board. The term of Leroy Smith and Jerry Franklin expired this month. Both have expressed an interest to serve another three years. And so, do I hear a motion? Or counselors, would you like to discuss this? Or do I hear a motion to reappoint two citizens who are willing to serve?
Second.
Do I hear a motion?
Oh, you made a motion to reappoint Leroy Smith and Jerry Franklin.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Leroy Smith and Jerry Franklin to the Stillwater Regional Airport Authority Board. Please vote.
Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor Nahara?
Yes.
Counselor Sanani?
Yes.
All right. Jerry Franklin and Leroy Smith are appointed for another three... Jerry, Jerry Franklin and Leroy Smith are appointed for another three years with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to the library trust board. Dr. Terry Miller has resigned from the board. Applications have been received from Sandeep Nabar and Angela Spencer, I'm sorry if I did not say that correctly. Counselors, do we have discussion on this? We have one vacancy and two applicants. Does someone have a nomination?
It's interesting, they're both OSU professors of the accounting department.
And they want to serve.
Sandeep, what's just here?
Yeah, that's me.
Sandeep's application was first. I looked at this yesterday, and while we would like to appoint both of them, I have something else that maybe we could ask Angela to do, because his application was in about 15 days earlier than hers. I think the only, I was trying to figure out a fair way to do this, so...
So moved, second.
So we have a motion and a second to appoint Sandeep to the Stillwater Library Trust, Board. Please vote.
Mayor Noble.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor Nahara?
Yes.
Counselor Sanotti?
Yes.
Okay, and that was approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to the Audit Committee. Jerry Franklin's term expires this month, and he is willing to serve another three-year term. There is one vacancy, but no application, so we can fill that at a later date, or we could ask Angela Spencer if she would like to do that, since...
She is CPA, yes.
She's a CPA.
She has a number of years of experience as a CPA and has accounting faculty member and good understanding of financial reporting and investment analysis.
So I think she's perfect for the Audit Committee, if she would be willing to serve. If we could ask her, maybe contact her and ask her tomorrow if she would be willing to serve, that way we've filled a vacancy and we are, and she absolutely wants to help her community, so I think it's a win-win. We have a motion, do we have a motion to accept Jerry for another three-year term and to nominate Angela Spencer to come on to the committee?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Do you want to check with her?
Okay, we'll check with her.
We'll bring it back to you.
Okay, okay, that would be great. Okay, so we'll just vote on Jerry Franklin tonight.
Reappointment.
On his reappointment.
Mayor Noble.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor Nahara?
Yes.
Counselor Sanotti?
Yes.
And...
It might be appropriate to confirm, for us to appoint her just conditionally on her interest, to say bringing it back, but...
Okay.
What does our attorney think?
We need to make sure that that's the, that that spot doesn't have the specific, any other specific requirements, so probably would be better to just engage your interest, and you can put it back on the next agenda, because I don't think the committee meets before you meet again.
We meet on the 25th again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, so we need to, we voted on Jerry Franklin, and he is reappointed to the Audit Committee for another three-year term. And we will come back on the 25th after Angela, after we check on that one. That takes us to item D, Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, and several council members nominated someone. Counselor Zanotti is nominating Eric Lundie, or excuse me, Eric London, and we just need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Eric London to the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. Please vote.
Mayor Noble.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor Nahara?
Yes.
Counselor Sanotti?
Yes.
And that motion is approved for Eric London with a vote of five to zero. I'm going to recess this meeting and go to the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting, then we'll come back to the rest of the City Council meeting for executive session. At this time, I call the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting to order for January 11th. And trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item or make a motion for consent docket?
Must approve consent docket.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second for the, to approve the consent docket, please vote.
Chair Noble.
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Weaver?
Yes.
Trustee Nahara?
Yes.
Trustee Sanotti?
Yes.
And the consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to, I guess that's all we had, right?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting. Please vote.
Mayor Noble.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor Nahara?
Yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned from Stillwater Economic Development Authority at 6:06 PM, and I'm going to reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting. Do we have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into the executive session, please vote. Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.